Good evening. I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for October the second, 2023. Thank you for joining us tonight. We have three agenda items, reports this tonight. One, item number one is homeless navigation program update. Item number two is regulating uncodified special committees. And item number three is the Let's Talk Resident Engagement Program update North I-70 and Lutheran Crown Hill. We will start our meeting tonight as we do most of our meetings with an opportunity for the public to come and address the council. On study session, we asked that you only address the items that we're talking about. So homeless navigation program, uncodified special committees, or the Let's Talk program that we just are going to get a report on. I don't see anyone signed up to speak tonight, but if you are in council chambers and have not signed up who would still like to speak, we'd be happy to have you speak. Now is your opportunity. If you're joining us online in the virtual format, if you'd please raise your hand, we're happy to bring you into the meeting. So I'll take just a minute. No one's coming to the podium. I'll check with my IT people and see if anyone is joining us online with a hand raised.
No, sir.
Okay. No one stepping forward to speak, so we'll move off of that and go to agenda item number one. This is a homeless navigation program update, and I will go to Lauren Mickulak, who is joining us tonight as the, in lieu of our city manager, our city manager and several of his staff, our staff are in a conference tonight in Texas. We hope they learn a lot, come back and tell us a lot, and travel safely. So with that, Lauren, do we have a report?
Thank you. We do have a report. Joining us at the table tonight is our housing navigator, Cory Kohler. We also have Mary Ann Schilling on the Zoom to help answer questions. I'm going to share the screen as Cory starts to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Lauren. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Cory Kohler. I am the housing navigator with the city's homeless navigation program, here to give you an update on the program. So I'll run through just some of the things that I'm going to be talking about tonight. The first is a quick staffing update. Then we'll talk about severe weather briefly, and then I'd like to let you all know about a new feature of the homeless navigation program, which we're calling aftercare. Then we'll do some client updates, and then briefly talk about some grant opportunities and other partnerships. So the first staffing update, as I'm sure most of you are aware, Rebecca Radaba, the program's homeless navigator, resigned her position at the end of August and left to accept a new role with the city of Lakewood. We are, of course, very excited for Rebecca and wish her nothing but the best. She is leaving behind some very big shoes to fill, but we are in the recruitment process and expect, have an anticipated start date for the new homeless navigator later this Severe weather, so it's no coincidence, and it is kind of the reason that the homeless navigation program comes to council around this time every year, is because we know how important severe weather is, and we want it to be top of mind and for you all to be as up to date on all the processes and procedures as possible. So just as a reminder, the severe weather season runs from October 1st, so it started last night and runs until April 30th. And the program through the severe weather shelter network is activated when the forecasted overnight temperature is set to be below 20 degrees or below 32 with precipitation. The severe weather shelter network is once again this year using its congregate model whereby single adults and couples stay the night at local churches that the shelter network has partnered with. And they have divided the area into three regions, north, central, and south. Wheat Ridge is in the north region. And just like last year, everyone in order to participate must first register with the severe weather shelter network, and there are certain eligibility criteria. But we don't have all of the information yet. We're still waiting on severe weather shelter network to iron some things out, so we will pass that information along to you when we get it, which should be soon. Luckily, the weather looks like we're not anticipating any severe weather nights in the near future. And then as a reminder, the process is different for families, so anyone with household members under the age of 18. For those folks, they access services through our partners at the county. The Jeffco Human Services has its own set of navigators specifically for families, and the county often partners with pre-designated motels to provide motel vouchers through the season, but that is also still being worked out. And just overall, there's a lot going on with severe weather always, every year, and I know it's a lot to remember. So you may recall that last year I sent an email with all of the processes and how everything works, just so you can have that for reference whenever you might need it. I will do the same this year as soon as we get close to having that first activation and as we get everything ironed out with the process for severe weather shelter network. So aftercare, this is a new feature or a new component of the homeless navigation program whereby the navigators stay in touch with, intentionally and actively stay in touch with our clients after they've been housed. We maintain contact at regular intervals to check in, to see how they're doing, and see if any support is needed, and either providing that support directly or making the appropriate referrals to other agencies or services. So one of the things we were seeing and why we felt that this was needed is that we were getting a lot of calls from clients maybe weeks or even months after they had been housed, and they were calling us sort of in crisis mode because their housing was at risk for one reason or another. And we were finding that often those reasons were relatively minor issues that if they had been addressed early on would not have risen to much significance at all. But because we didn't know about them until they grew, it made our intervention much harder and, of course, much more stressful for the client who, you know, got to the sort of precipice of potentially losing their housing. So we wanted to set up a process whereby we can intervene on some of those things at a much earlier place, when it's not only easier for us, less stressful for the client, and it's just better all around. Because as counterintuitive as it might seem, maintaining housing can be just as hard, if not harder, than obtaining that housing in the first place. Because experiencing homelessness is traumatic, very traumatic for some folks, and it often only catches up with them once they are housed. When they are still experiencing homelessness, kind of survival mode takes over, and a lot of that stuff is pushed down, but once they're housed, that trauma really catches up to them, and it can make the simplest things much more difficult. So even just following the procedures or the rules and regulations of a housing voucher or recertifying that housing voucher, which you have to do every year and involves a mountain of paperwork, or if you lose income or just the income slightly changes, or if you have a change in your benefits, any of those that are seemingly simple things can magnify and become much more hard to manage when you are also managing the trauma that you had experienced while you were experiencing homelessness. So the aftercare program or component hopes to address some of that and help people with those things. Clients do not have to participate. They don't have to answer our calls, and not everyone needs the support. There are some who, once they achieve their housing, they're good to go. But we are seeing already a very positive response from the clients that we contact, whether they're, you know, they're continuing to answer our calls, again, when they don't need to, or we've had a lot reach out to us unsolicited because they know the door is always open and that they can reach out to us for even what might seem like a small thing. So it's already making a difference. There's one gentleman who reached out to me, again, unsolicited, to let me know that he was really struggling with his mental health. He had mentioned this to me before he got housed, that he struggled with mental health, specifically depression, but found that once he had an apartment and he was spending time, most of his time alone in that apartment, it's not only literally quiet, but it's sort of a lot more quiet in your mind, and that's when some of those demons can come up and are the loudest, when you're just by yourself in your apartment. So he reached out and asked for help, and, you know, I made the referrals to what I think will help him. And it's, again, one of those things that because he reached out when he did, that's a much easier way for us to intervene and try to help than if he had let those mental health struggles catch up and maybe become something bigger and potentially threaten his housing. Some general client updates. So since the program started in December 2020, we have served 229 clients. And whether that number seems big or small, I wanted to put it in kind of a little bit more context. So not everyone we speak to when we go on outreach becomes a client. Not every referral that we get becomes a client. But people, when people are ready to sit down with us and really start working on housing, and we do a full intake and put them into the HMIS database, that's when we consider someone to be a client of the program. And we've, of course, mentioned to you all that we recently, very recently, reached the milestone of 100 individuals housed. And just to give a little bit of more breakdown on that number, because exiting the program can look a lot of different ways, 23 of those 100 went to transitional housing, which can is something like sober living. 24 went to what we call permanent housing, but they have their own income and are paying rent completely by themselves with no support from us or anyone else. And then 43 have permanent housing that's paid for with a voucher of some kind. Current caseload is roughly 62. It kind of ebbs and flows every day, but 57 of those are in Wheat Ridge, five are in Edgewater. And we also, this year, wanted to dig into the data a little bit more and see if we can pull out some maybe useful or illuminating numbers for you all. And so we looked at the expenses and found that, on average, we're spending about $1,200 per client. And each client, again, on average, the average length of stay in the program is 200 days for the client exits. And exit does not always mean housing. Exit could mean we just lost contact with them or they passed away, but average 200 days spent within the program. And I wanted to share another success story with you all of a client who first made contact with Rebecca, I think very early on, maybe in one of the first couple of months that Rebecca was on the job. Someone who, as happened to so many people, lost their job when COVID first hit and then lost their housing and just hasn't been able to bounce back since. They've been living in their car, really since COVID first hit in March of 2020. And this week, hopefully by the end of this week, maybe next week, this person will be moving into a unit at the Vance Street Lofts. And the reason I wanted to share that particular story is because it highlights the importance of the partnership that the city has with Foothills Regional Housing, because we were able to get those 12 referrals is exactly what we needed for this particular person. You know, you can put someone on all the wait lists and lotteries in the world, but something like this very unique opportunity with Vance Street is what finally allowed us to help this person get housed. And, of course, just to highlight how difficult that can be, because this person has spent almost three years engaged with the program. So, you know, they keep us updated. We kept them updated whenever waiting lists or lotteries opened or anything we thought might be a good fit for them came around, and it still took three years, but hopefully I never, I always want to knock on wood, but by the end of this week or next week, they should be moving into Vance Street. And then briefly, some partnerships and grant opportunities. So the first is the Glory of God Lutheran Church. You may remember last year their congregation donated some move-in kits to our program, and they've done so again this year. They are incredible and so highly valued by our clients. They are, those laundry baskets there, they have things like cutlery, bowls and plates, cleaning supplies, shower curtain, a lot of little things that, I don't know, you just kind of take for granted and wouldn't think, but that are glaringly obvious when you walk into an empty apartment that someone doesn't have. So crucial stuff, and includes a really high-quality air mattress as well. You know, just the majority of our clients don't have many or any possessions that they can fill their unit with. And then so that, again, can, maybe calling back to the aftercare program, that can contribute to it not really feeling like their home when they don't have a lot of that kind of stuff. So these move-in kits are really wonderful. And they also donated 60 hygiene kits that we can use while we're on outreach to continue to build trust and rapport with people who are still on the streets and maybe not quite ready to engage. Then in early September, the program applied for and was awarded a $25,000 grant from the Colorado Gives Foundation through their Thriving Jeffco Responsive Grant Program. This is unrestricted funding support that will allow us to continue what we're doing, but one particular idea we have in mind for the funding is to supplement the kind, the move-in kits and similar things that we, that you can see up there. Because some folks, you know, might have a storage unit that they've been paying for even while they've been experiencing homelessness, and so they might have things like a bed and a couch, but folks might not have kind of what I might consider sort of intangible things. So, yeah, I have a bed and a couch, but maybe they don't have pots and pans, and maybe they love to cook. Or I had a client who was really artistic and being creative, painting, drawing, brought them a lot of peace. And so the idea we had is to be able to support people in those very, very specific things. So tailored to the individual, if someone loves to cook, we can maybe get them nice pots and pans or whatever specific cooking equipment they like to use, or someone who is really artistic, we can get them some really nice art supplies. So that's an idea we have for that money. And that is it. Any questions?
Okay. Oh, Cory, thank you very much. Great presentation. Questions from council, Cory?
Thank you, Cory. That's a great presentation. Just had a quick question as we have the Ives being built and now they're adding on to it. What's the priority like, and have you started talking to Foothills about what that priority system's going to look like for you to be able to put our people into those houses?
Yeah, as far as the referrals, I can only speak about Vance Street right now. Ives, I think, is still somewhat in the works. But for Vance Street, it really, they've been great in that they're leaving it up to us. They just say, send us your referrals. They're not putting any sort of parameters out there, so it's up to us. And before Rebecca left, we went through her client list, my client list, and sort of identified who we think could be successful, and then we're kind of just going in order of who's been with the program for the longest. That's really it.
Okay. Great. So it sounds like it's a pretty successful partnership so far?
So far, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Cory, for providing that really informative update. When we, you know, first started doing this work, we knew that there was a lot of need, and we didn't really know how we'd be able to show up and translate that to success stories. And it's hard work, and it's just really, you know, encouraging to see the numbers, but these aren't numbers, they're people. And a couple of things I just want to, I don't really have questions, I just want to first sincerely thank you for the service you're doing for our community. It's really important and valuable. I really appreciate you explaining what happens after people are housed and that what they were experiencing while experiencing homelessness actually is a continuum of needs that they have. And I really am grateful that we, as a city, are recognizing that supporting them after they're housed is as important to their success as getting them housed. And speaking to the way trauma shows up in people's lives, I think just exemplifies the care and quality of care that we're bringing to this program. So thank you for naming that. And I'm very excited about Vance Street Lofts. I mean, those are, it's a great, it's a great project. They're great units, and I really love what Glory of God Lutheran Church is doing around those move-in kits. Is there ways other community members can help with that? Like, it just, it seems like, I mean, you know, getting into organizing, like, large donation things is not the business of council, but I just, as that came up and you were talking through what it was, I mean, I'm just like going through the crap in my basement, and I'm like, oh, I could fill a laundry basket with really useful stuff for people? What's the best way to connect community members who might recognize they've got stuff that could help people? Because we have a lot of affordable housing units coming online, specifically in District Two, and it'd just be really great if we could help connect, like, well-intended neighbors with needs people might have.
I think one of the best ways is probably the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation and donating there. I think one of the things we're also potentially looking into is, you know, maybe a partnership with ARC to try to get some vouchers for items there. And so I know that's not really the one-to-one, but even donating to organizations like that, and then eventually, you know, we can try to get from them.
And then I just have a quick story. About a year and a half ago, I live near St. James Episcopal Church, and they have a food pantry for folks, and there was a gentleman that I encountered at the food pantry, and it just so happened I had an extra sleeping bag that I ran over to my house and brought back for him. And then I gave him Rebecca's contact information, and I don't remember his name, but I ran into him about two months later, actually, down on the Clear Creek, and he had connected with Rebecca, and when he saw me, his face just lit up. And he told the story of having been in other parts of the metro area and having been, like, promised that he would be getting assistance and help. And he said, when he reached out to Rebecca, like, it was the first time, like, that he actually felt like someone was following up and caring, and he found it very easy to stay in touch with her. He said staying in touch with people is frequently really, really challenging, and he wasn't housed when I saw him, but he felt really hopeful. And first of all, it was just really neat to hear that one personal story, and so I just, I have my own personal experience with the work you're doing, and I just really am grateful for it.
Thank you for sharing that. I also want a quick plug for our CSOs and our park staff, because I had a client similarly, when they called me, they were given my card by either park staff or CSOs, and then they called me, and in the course of our conversation, they said, yeah, no other municipality, because they were also one that jumped around kind of wherever they were forced to go. And they said no other municipality even bothered to, you know, hear, try calling this person. It was just sort of go away. And so it's, yeah, it's great that we even offered that.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Thanks. And I'm just going to follow up a little bit to what Councilor Holtein was talking I want to say in the last two years, we were given a sheet of paper that had all of the different resources, including the navigator's name, but also just the list of things. And do you all remember this sheet of paper? And I was just curious if that could go on a smaller half-sheet card? Because I actually went photocopied it myself, and I keep some in my car for purpose of people knowing. But I also have just constituents that ask me sort of what's happening, what's going on, and I think it's, to Rachel's point about sort of people want to help, and sometimes they want to help with donation, but also they want to know what the resources are themselves. So I don't know if that's something that we can get a stack of or something like that. And then my other question was similar to the cold weather, regarding the cold weather things, and if there's a way for people to get trained and involved with helping with those emergency times when they're happening at a local church. And I would just really appreciate that information.
Yeah, absolutely. I can look at the resource sheet and what else is out there. We certainly don't want to reinvent the wheel. I know there's a lot of organizations that have resource flyers or something similar, so I can see what's out there and how we can change ours. And then I will say for the severe weather shelter network, they are always looking for volunteers.
That's, and I know that people would often like to volunteer locally. If there's a way for us to let people know that, obviously, they probably need to go through some training sessions, and so that before wintertime hits us, just if we could get that information so we could put it out there if people want to help with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Cory, I had a couple of questions. As you work with the homeless population in Wheat Ridge and Edgewater, do the numbers seem to ebb and flow? Does it seem to be many of the same individuals that are here? Is there great turnover? And are there any, you know, either weather or are there other factors that you've been able to discern that either bring more homeless people into our community or make them go somewhere else, I guess?
It's hard to say about some set patterns. It certainly does ebb and flow, and there are factors that I'm sure I'm not aware of that change the volume or the location of folks, but what I can say broadly is it typically seems like the colder months sort of bring people to higher traffic areas. I think because, you know, visibility helps with finding services, and just service agencies exist in high-traffic areas, and then it seems the warmer weather, people might feel a little more confident that they, you know, on their own survival, so they can maybe stay hidden.
All right. And let me ask you, you know, we embarked on this navigation program a couple of years ago, and we've got, over the last two years, have sort of invested more resources into housing, into homeless resources. Do you think we're making progress? I mean, do you think we're, and more importantly, maybe, do you think we're headed in the right direction?
Yes, absolutely. Definitely headed in the right direction. It's hard to say on progress, again, because of the numbers, how much they fluctuate, and how it depends on what other surrounding areas are doing, but absolutely headed in the right direction. This is, I feel incredibly grateful to be a part of what you were mentioning. I mean, this program is wonderful and allows us so much flexibility in how we can respond to people and follow up with them, that, yes, this is, this certainly seems like the model that will see the most success.
Okay. And let me ask you, do you think, you know, and this is sort of the city council and our city government, are there more things that we should be doing or thinking? or thinking about that we're not sort of considering or other, other things that maybe would prove fruitful for this path that we're on?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. I mean, the partnership with Foothills Regional Housing, partnerships like that, I think are crucial.
Very good.
That are, yeah, that are a very quick step from us to housing. Yeah, those, those are great. But you're already doing those, which is wonderful.
And for the, for the work that you do, we're providing adequate tools and resources for you?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
More questions or comments for Corey? We'll go with Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Corey. One question I had was, I attended a little bit ago, the Jeffco Breakfast. And they pointed out that We Ridge had a high number, one of the highest of homeless being arrested. And they said a lot of it was due to failure to appear or something small would happen, something small would happen, then they just wouldn't appear. And so that sounds like it's kind of a, I guess, a communication because they're moving around. But I don't know if you have any insights? And maybe that's what the mayor was talking about, like, what else can we do?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for bringing that up. We, it is, it is a conversation that is ongoing with our courts. And we are working on a change to the model to provide something more like a community court, which if you are aware of the program in Arvada, it's called One Small Step. And then there's something similar in Lakewood, where, at least with the one in Lakewood, it's held at a kind of a neutral location. It's at a church. Because I think a lot of folks, City Hall is hard to get to comparative, you know, compared to some other places. And that can be enough reason to not appear. And so we are actively working on a new model where, with, talking with the court staff and local churches in the area to change that and to make it more of a, kind of like a resource fair, kind of a magnet so that people want to come. You know, not only to settle whatever legal issue they have with the courts, but then they can also access resources while they're there. There are service providers aplenty that go to the Lakewood, which I think is this second or second and fourth Thursday of every month, maybe something like that, at the Mount Air Church on 13th. And that's, that's been shown to be really successful by getting more people to show up to clear warrants and to maybe get these reduced or different sentences so that they're not going to jail.
I will definitely, yeah, I'd like to, maybe we can get some, in the future, some staff to see how, if those number actually starts going down
Yeah.
after that gets implemented. Thank you.
Counselor Weaver?
Aren't we, we are implementing something like that. Wasn't the judge just telling us about that? Okay, all right.
Okay.
I just wanted to verify that.
And I didn't want to say too much if it was still...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to connect the dots that we had. Understood, understood. Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Okay, Corey? Thank, oh, pardon me, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know where these severe shelters are? Or is it confidential?
Not confidential, but I think still being worked out. The churches have to jump through a lot of hoops with fire code and all these sorts of things and make sure they have enough staff. So I think Severe Weather Shelter Network is still just ironing out which churches.
And so if one is north, that's including Arvada and us?
Yes.
Is it Golden and, you know, further north too? Because it makes me wonder how many people would be able to get shelter in those places.
Right. That is, that is definitely the biggest challenge and why we're hoping that the registration process will allow for us to register folks that we see. And, you know, then we can even give bus tickets or they can, there are magnet events supposed to be every day that a severe weather has been declared where people can go to get bus tickets to get to the church. Because, yes, sometimes the churches are far away.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your report. I do just want to also point out that we specifically in Wheat Ridge addressed the fire department issue with our coding so that they could have severe shelter networks.
Let us know if that becomes an issue because we thought we had that resolved. Okay. Corey, thank you very much. Great report. Glad to see that you and your team are making, making progress on this. I know it's, seems like an intractable problem, but, you know, got to keep working on it. Always let us know if there's more that we can do or should be looking at.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Thanks, thanks so much. Okay. We're going to go to our second item, item number two. This is regulating uncodified special committees. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you sure did. Thank you.
And...
So joining us at the table, we've got Cole, our management analyst, who you've seen before, talking about board and commission and bylaws. And Marianne is joining us on Zoom again. I will share your slides. We'll go from there.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me. All right, shall I get started?
You may.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for allowing me to come before you tonight and talk about our uncodified special committees. So I'd like to get started by going over the agenda of tonight's presentation. First, we're going to be talking about the background of our uncodified special committees and why we're discussing them tonight. Then we're going to move on to discuss some regulations for our uncodified special committees before discussing how we would apply those regulations to existing uncodified special committees. Then move on to discuss appointing idea committee members and then coming to the conclusion of the presentation and being available for your questions at that time. So let's start with the background of our uncodified special committees by answering the question, what are uncodified special committees? So these are the committees that are created by city staff or by the city council using the powers given to them in their council rules. And these committees are accountable to their own bylaws rather than being accountable to the municipal code or charter, which puts them in contrast with our boards and commissions. So the city currently has four uncodified special committees: the Active Adult Center Advisory Committee, the Wheat Ridge Police Department's Community Advisory Group, Sustainable Wheat Ridge, and the newest one, which the council just created, the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Accessibility, or IDEA Committee. At the August 7, 2023 study session, staff presented council with a policy to determine who selects the members of these uncodified special committees. It was at that time that the council recognized the need to have a broader discussion about the regulations for our uncodified special committees. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight before we move on to discussing idea committee member appointments. So let's begin by talking about regulations for uncodified special committees. And I'd like to start this by laying out the framework of the regulatory mechanism that we've come up here for our uncodified special committees. First, we want to classify each committee as either a council-selected committee, a staff-selected committee, or a hybrid committee. And then based upon their classification, that'll determine which rules they adhere to, who the committee is accountable to, and at minimum, how many district-represented seats are on the committee. Not to get too far ahead of ourselves here, but to give you a preview, staff is going to recommend that the council-selected and hybrid committees behave largely the same way. And we're going to recommend that council give staff discretion over the staff-selected committees. So let's start by talking about the different classifications and who selects committee members. So we broke it down three different ways. We have our council-selected committees. And we feel like these are committees that are quasi-judiciary in nature, advisory committees that have a direct impact on policy development, and committees that facilitate communication between the council and the community. Then we have our staff-selected committees, which are technical advisory committees, community liaison committees focused on specific activities or programs, and committees created for specific and limited-term community engagement projects. And then we have our hybrid committees, wherein, for example, if there was an advisory committee related to a specific public improvement project that required both specific technical expertise and a wide representation of community members, that the city council would select some members and staff would select some members. Now that we've talked about our classifications, let's talk about some rules. So we are recommending that the council-selected and hybrid committees adopt the rules that align with the city's boards and commissions concerning having a three-year term length, two-term limit, that these term limits be consecutive, using the rounding approach to midterm appointments, that we define unexcused absences in the same way, that we have a similar automatic removal policy, and that they adhere to the Boards and Commissions Code of Ethics. So I do want to clarify that this conversation is a little bit separate than the one that you'll be having next Monday about adopting an ordinance to put those Boards and Commissions rules into place. What we're just saying here is that we feel like those council-selected and hybrid committees should follow the same rules because we feel like they're sensible and because that'd make it easier for staff to keep track of them and to regulate them. And then for our staff-selected committees, we're recommending that staff have discretion to apply these rules to those committees on a case-specific basis. In terms of accountability, we are recommending that the council-selected and hybrid committees be accountable to the city council, which would mean that by majority vote, the council can suspend, modify, or dissolve these committees. The council could create or amend the committee bylaws. And the council could remove committee members by majority vote during a public hearing. And then for the staff-selected committees, we're recommending that they be accountable to staff who had retained those same powers that I just mentioned. Let's move on to talk about district representation. So for our council-selected and hybrid committees, we are recommending that they reserve at least four positions for district representation selected by the city council. And that for our staff-selected committees, they apply district representation at their discretion on a case-specific basis. So to give a summary of what I just talked about, for our council-selected and hybrid committees, we're recommending that we align their bylaws with the Boards and Commissions rules, that they be accountable to the city council, and that they maintain at least four district-represented seats. And then for our staff-selected committees, we recommend that they be accountable to staff and that their bylaws and number of seats allocated for district representation remain at staff's discretion. So this is the first thing that we'll be asking you for consensus on tonight. And we're asking for consensus to use this framework or a different framework that the council would prefer. Next, let's move on to discuss how we would apply these regulations to our existing committees. And what we're going to do here is go one by one through each of these committees and talk about how the regulations apply to them. And we're going to start with the Active Adult Center Advisory Committee, which consists of nine members selected by the committee. And two of those nine members may be non-residents. These members are selected with a preference toward district representation, but not a requirement. The AACAC's mission is to organize fundraising to support the center's scholarship program and to advise staff on the operations of the center. Because of its mission, staff considers this to be a program advisory committee. And therefore, we're recommending that the committee be a staff-selected committee. And if council agrees with that classification, there would be no changes required because of that. Next, let's talk about the Wheat Ridge Police Department's Community Advisory Group, which consists of 10 to 15 members selected at-large by staff. The Community Advisory Group acts as an advisory committee to our police chief. It facilitates two-way communication between the police department and the community. And it supports volunteer events like National Night Out. Because of its mission, similar to the last one, we consider this to be a program advisory committee. Therefore, we're recommending that it be a staff-selected committee. And if council agrees with this classification, no changes would be required to this committee. Let's move on to discuss Sustainable Wheat Ridge, which consists of 12 at-large members selected by staff with a preference for expertise and district representation. Two of these 12 members may be non-residents. And there's also one non-voting city council liaison on this committee. Sustainable Wheat Ridge studies sustainable policy issues, promotes sustainability-based solutions, advises staff on best practices for the city's sustainability programming, and organizes events to achieve the goals described in the Sustainability Action Plan. In summary, Sustainable Wheat Ridge advises on the technical details and advises city council on policy issues. As a result, we're recommending that it be a hybrid committee with four seats selected by the city council and reserved for district representation, eight at-large seats selected by city staff with a preference for member expertise, and that two of these eight seats could be occupied by non-residents. We are recommending that we keep the non-voting council liaison, but we are recommending that this council liaison position adheres to the same rules that council approved for the IDEA Committee liaison, meaning that the mayor would appoint the liaison to a one-year term beginning in March of each year and that this position would be limited to serving two consecutive terms before someone else would fill the seat. We are recommending for this committee that you use the attached Sustainable Wheat Ridge form to select appointments. It's in your packet. And we're recommending that you use this form rather than the standard Boards and Commissions form because it's a little bit more specific and gets into details that are more focused on the committee's mission. If the council agrees with this classification, then staff would work with Sustainable Wheat Ridge to change its bylaws related to term length, term limits, unexcused absences, and Boards of Commissions Code of Ethics, as well as those other Boards and Commissions rules. Next, let's talk about the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Accessibility, or IDEA Committee. So council reached consensus to create the IDEA Committee at the August 7, 2023 study session. They reached consensus that it would consist of 10 regular members and one non-voting city council liaison appointed by the mayor and limited to two consecutive one-year terms. The mission of the IDEA Committee will be to advise the city council on IDEA-related issues, to organize events to promote IDEA in the community, to facilitate two-way communication between the city and the community, and to promote solutions to achieve the goals in the 2023 Race and Equity Task Force Recommendation Report, as well as to foster mutual respect and understanding of all persons. Like Sustainable Wheat Ridge, the IDEA Committee will advise staff on the technical details of programs and the city council on policy decisions. As a result, we're recommending that the IDEA Committee be considered a hybrid committee, that it have four seats selected by the city council and reserved for district representation, that it have six at-large seats selected by city staff with a preference for member expertise, and that two of these six seats could be occupied by non-residents. And again, we recommend keeping that non-voting council liaison to be annually appointed by the mayor and limited to two consecutive one-year terms. Once this committee is formed in early 2024, staff would work with the IDEA Committee to adopt conforming bylaws with its classification. So because we were talking about making a couple of these committees hybrid committees, we thought that you might have some questions about the selection process. And we wanted to cover that here real quickly for you. So staff would collect all of the applications for these hybrid committees. So staff would collect all of the applications for these hybrid committees, and then we would give them to the council, who would select members from that pool of applicants to get those district representative positions first. And then staff would select experts from the remaining pool of applicants, picking those members based on their expertise. And just like with our other Boards and Commissions, staff would plan to keep all these applications on file for a year. That way, they could be used during that time period. So in summary, we're recommending that the Active Adult Center Advisory Committee and Community Advisory Group be staff-selected committees, meaning that they would be accountable to staff and that their rules and the number of district-represented seats would be at staff's discretion. For Sustainable Wheat Ridge and IDEA Committee, we recommend that they be hybrid committees, meaning that they would be accountable to the city council, that they would adopt rules aligning with the Boards and Commissions, and that they would have four district-represented seats selected by the city council. On this item, we're asking for the city council to give us consensus to apply these regulations to these committees in this way. As an alternative to that, council could apply these regulations in a different way. For example, deciding that Sustainable Wheat Ridge and IDEA Committee should be council-selected committees, or considering Active Adult Center to be a hybrid committee, something like that. Moving on, we'd like to discuss appointing IDEA Committee members. And before I get started here, I'd like to acknowledge that in your packet, we included a draft application for our IDEA Committee members to fill out. And that's what we're going to be talking about here tonight. The first question that we'd like to address here is should the council use contact information to make appointments? And contact information refers to things like name, email, phone number, and some other things. For the 2021 Race and Equity Task Force appointments, staff concealed contact information from the city council during the appointment process to prevent bias. For the IDEA Committee appointments, we are recommending that the council actually use this contact information because we see benefits in its ability for council to verify qualifications and gain additional contacts of members. So for this item, we're asking for council's consensus to either use that contact information or to direct staff to conceal that contact information from the council during the appointment process. Next, we'd like to address the question, should the council use demographic information to make appointments? So applicants are requested, but not required, to provide the following demographic information as part of their application related to gender, race, age, education, household income, and household housing status. And the plan here is that staff will use this demographic information to identify underrepresented groups among the applicants and the committees. That'll allow us to perform targeted outreach toward those underrepresented groups in an effort to get more applications from those underrepresented groups. And then for staff's appointments, it would allow us to ensure that, at a minimum, the committee's diversity matches the diversity in the city of Wheat Ridge and maybe even exceeds its diversity. The city of Denver used a similar approach for its Neighborhood Area Plan Advisory Committees. And we actually just hired the staff member from Denver that was running that project. And in conversations with them, they found that using this demographic information to select committee appointments was a really effective tool to be able to ensure the diversity of the committee and make sure that there were a lot of different perspectives on the committee. We also asked some former members of the Race and Equity Task Force to review these demographic questions, and then we incorporated some of their feedback into the questions. So we are recommending that the council also use this demographic information to help ensure that the appointments align, at a minimum, with the diversity of lived experience in the city of Wheat Ridge. And to facilitate this, staff would provide the council with current demographic information for the city of Wheat Ridge, as well as the IDEA Committee. And if this practice is successful, then staff might explore incorporating it into the appointment processes for other Boards and Commissions and uncodified committees in the future, but we'd like to try it out with this committee first. So on this item, we're asking for consensus to use this demographic information to ensure that IDEA Committee appointments reflect the diversity in the city of Wheat Ridge. But as an alternative, council could select to conceal some or all of the demographic information from themselves during the appointment process. Or council could reach consensus to direct staff not to collect demographic information in the IDEA Committee application. Finally, I'd like to ask for your general feedback on the application questions in there, and I'll just run through what they are real quickly for you. So first, we ask people to tell them about themselves and why they'd like to join the IDEA Committee. We ask, how has your identity, gender, ethnicity, LGBTQIA+ status, class, age, ability, et cetera, or personal, professional, volunteer, or life experience prepared you to further the development of IDEA in the city of Wheat Ridge? We ask, what are some of the IDEA-related challenges that the city is facing, and how should the IDEA Committee work to address them? We ask if they've completed any diversity, anti-bias awareness, cultural sensitivity, or related trainings, and if they have, to specify which ones they've completed. We ask committee members, because they are expected to contribute an average of four hours a month toward the committee's work, we ask them to tell us how many hours on average a month they can contribute. And then we ask them if there's anything else that they would like to share. Now, these committee questions, we came up with after we looked at the applications for similar committees across the front range and then tried to come up with some novel ideas ourselves. So on this item, we'd like to ask the council for consensus to accept these IDEA Committee application questions or to modify them, add a question, or remove a question. Our next steps for the IDEA Committee, since we're on this topic, we wanted to share those next steps, is that if we get consensus from the city council tonight, we would begin accepting applications by the end of October 2023, so this month, and that staff would present these applications to the city council in early 2024 to make appointments at the same time as other Boards, Commissions, and Sustainable Wheat Ridge. That brings me to the conclusion of my presentation. In summary, staff is requesting consensus on the following items: regulating uncodified special committees, applying these regulations to existing committees, using contact information to appoint IDEA Committee members, using demographic information to appoint IDEA Committee members, and asking for some general feedback on these IDEA Committee application questions. That is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but for the time being, I'll turn this meeting back over to the mayor.
Okay, Cole, thank you very much. Nice presentation. We'll open this up for questions. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if maybe we want to take this item at a time. So for the first item, one of the questions that the mayor and I were discussing actually today is the hybrid, the hybrid style, the staff selection. So oftentimes, when something gets selected, like if the mayor appoints somebody, then it gets ratified by council. And so I just wanted to clarify that the staff selections would then be ratified by council.
So that was not something that we had envisioned, but if that is how the council would prefer it to go, I think staff would certainly be open to that, and we don't foresee any problems with that.
And then I do have one question. The police department has a, they have a committee that when stuff gets seized, then they have it for a certain amount of time, and then they can sell it.
The forfeiture committee.
Yeah, that committee. But I didn't see that on any of these lists. Would that be a committee that would be, like a committee that would be a staff-appointed committee? Or I feel like the mayor appoints someone to that committee, right? Don't you point a city council?
It seems like, yeah. Seems like I do that. These don't happen every week, so.
Well, this is the first I'm hearing of this committee. So I won't be able to give you a lot of direction on this, but if it sounds like the forfeiture committee is a committee that focuses on regulations pertaining to forfeitures and overseeing that those forfeitures are done according to the code of laws that we have, then it certainly sounds like a technical committee to me. And as a result, I would say that it should be a staff-selected committee.
Yeah, well, and also, like, you make decisions on, like, because the money, right? Because sometimes it's money that you get. So they make decisions also on what to spend that money on. It's typically police department.
Yeah, usually, yeah, usually equipment for the PD. Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that you brought up was about getting, there's a lot of data on the one that talked about. Might have been on the IDEA Committee that had the asking, like, housing, what your income is. And my thought is, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think, you know, my first question is, is that data going to be public? That's not something that I would, that I would want to have public, all that information.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Thank you for bringing that up. So the way that we would envision it is that we would, if council would like to use that information, we would share that information with council. But then when it goes in the packet, for example, we would black it all out so that it wouldn't be public information open to everyone.
Okay, because, yeah, I was thinking about some type of anonymized data where I understand, I understand what you're trying to do, but just so you could look at kind of statistics, but you wouldn't be associated to any one person. And then my, my opinion on the, the council appointment of it being, I can't remember what the word was, but we wouldn't know who it was, I think, was one of the choices. I would not be for that. I would want, if the council is going to appoint a person, I would want to know who that person is and not just, not know anything about them, you know, like very little information. I think because the, since the council, especially like when it's done by district, I just want some transparency and to know who it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So can you explain the reasoning behind having staff select a majority number of members in the hybrid model?
Yes, so for Sustainable Wheat Ridge and for the IDEA Committee, the reason why we recommended that a majority of the members, so in the case of IDEA Committee, six, and in the case of Sustainable Wheat Ridge, eight members, be selected by staff was because we felt like we wanted to reserve as many seats as possible for expertise.
So my preference is that, since we are an elected body and we are selected to represent our citizens, that I would prefer we select a majority number of these hybrid committees with staff selecting the minority of them. And then also, as far as the, so the Active Adult Center Advisory Committee used to be appointed by the mayor, and so now you're wanting that to be all staff-selected, correct?
So at times, it's been appointed by the mayor. At times, it's been selected by the committee themselves. So what's been the case more recently is that the committee members themselves select the members. Because we feel like the Active Adult Center Advisory Committee is really a fundraising committee for scholarships and then just advises staff on things that are specific to the center, we feel like it's a technical advisory committee and that it should be accountable to staff and should be selected by staff.
And then as far as the Wheat Ridge Police Department Advisory Group, how is that currently selected?
It's all members, which there's ten to fifteen members at any given time, are selected at-large by city staff. So the police department, police chief and his staff, they get the applications, they read through them, and they pick members out that they feel like would be a good fit and fit in with the mission of that committee well.
So my preference with, with all of this is that a majority of the members be residents and that a majority of them be council-selected and all ratified, at least as far as the hybrid for, so Sustainable Wheat Ridge and IDEA.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Councilmember Hoppe introduced us to go one by one, but we've kind of opened it up, I think, a little bit more broadly. So, so I am currently the council-appointed liaison for Sustainable Wheat Ridge. And the proposal, so they discussed this proposal at the last meeting. And, you know, my instinct is probably similar to Ms. Dozeman's in that the district representation, you know, to me feels important. However, for Sustainable Wheat Ridge, having served with them, you know, there is really specific, like, expertise that is actually serving our one staff person for sustainability. And so that committee, I actually really support sticking with one representative per district and then letting the rest be technical advisors because they really are bringing a depth of expertise around, you know, sustainable, like, building codes, transportation, like, solar panels, you know, reducing our, you know, you know, waste. And, I mean, they just, they bring expertise that's, like, pretty specific. So I think the broader, the expertise we have on that committee, the more it's actually going to be supporting our staff. So I support keeping the proposed four, four appointed by council and the rest would be selected by staff for that committee. I do have a question, so about the Wheat Ridge Community Advisory Group. They're portrayed here as a program. They advise the police department on program, community programming. So they don't ever discuss any type of policy issues on that particular group?
Not really. The police chief will discuss certain issues as they come up from time to time with those bodies, but it's not very often that they're discussing policy issues that are affecting the day-to-day operations of the police department.
Okay. That, I asked just because that particular group's just always felt a little bit opaque to me. And then, you know, by design, it's actually really within the police department. But, you know, I feel like the conversation between our community and the police department is a really important one. And so I would actually like us to consider doing a hybrid on that one and appointing, because I think the dialogue between, you know, the public and the police department should, should be out a little bit more in the public face and involve council a little bit more. So I'd like to consider a hybrid for that particular committee.
Thank you. Councilor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilor Holtein on that. Because the, the Community Advisory Group specifically represents our community with the police, I think that having at least one representative from each district appointed by council on that makes a lot more sense. Other than that, and then I, I agree with most of the recommendations from staff on all of these. I do like, as Councilor Ohm said, being able to see who we're appointing. We're accountable to our voters and our constituents, and not knowing who we're appointing to somebody who's going to be there for three years is not something I'm comfortable with. So I would like to know who we're appointing to, to all of the groups. But I do think, I do think it's a good idea that staff looks through these and appoints the expertise. That's fine with me. But I would like to see us, as a council, ratify those decisions so that if there's something that just doesn't make sense, that we have a say in that as well. So other than that, I think I'm good.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
I actually agree with everything Councilor Stites just said. There is one thing I would like to add regarding the word expertise because I think that there's an opportunity for, if, if staff is going to put on a majority of people on a committee, whether it would be, and this is for the IDEA Committee as well, correct? We're calling, we're calling that experts. And I, I'll just give you an example of, I think there are, there are other people. I think it should be expertise and interest because I think these, these committees are also an opportunity for people with less experience in these topics but are very interested and want to be involved and learn more with the community. And, and I'll give you an example of, of my mother, who happens to live in Golden, who is very interested in issues of sustainability in her community and has sort of become an expert on recycling in her late seventies and eighties and gone on all of these tours and really empowered herself. But she would not be considered an expert, nor do I think she would look like an expert on an application. And so I would just ask that staff be a little bit more inclusive when you say the word expert, to be, have expertise and/or interest in these topics, because she would be an excellent person on such a committee because of her time and background that she's spent on the particular topic of recycling.
Mm-hmm.
And so if, if other people are amenable to including that, that wording, I would be very appreciative of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I just want to, I want to bring up two things. I think that the, when we're looking at the IDEA committee application, I don't know that we actually need to see financial information of people in our community. And so I would, I would vote that we conceal the financial information. Like, I, if, like, I, you know, I don't think that it would be comfortable for my neighbor who would apply for that to tell me how much they're making. So I, I think I would like to conceal the financial information. And then, I want to ask Counselor Holtein, sorry, my allergies are making like my whole head crazy. Yeah. You're the council liaison on the Sustainable Wheat Ridge. And the suggestion is that the council liaison is a non-voting member that only can serve two one-year terms. And to me, I feel like you should be a voting member as the liaison. And I also feel like it should be something that until another councilperson says, hey, I really would like to do that, or, you know, if your four-year term as a councilperson's up, then another councilperson would get, would get appointed to that. I don't think it should be limited to just two one-year terms. But I want to ask your opinion, because you're on a board like that.
You may reply.
Thank you. So, so I actually support being a non-voting member. I've become really aware on that committee that I have, like, undue influence. And I really want to support the dialogue and ideas that are coming out of the members who are volunteering their time, because it's what's important to them. And when I speak, I just, I have more influence. And so I am in best service to that committee to listen to their ideas, advise them on ideas that are coming forward if they're trying to figure out the best way to navigate those. And then to, you know, judiciously use my, you know, ability to connect with other leadership in the city to, you know, bring certain things forward. So I think in this type of situation, it's important to be non-voting. And I would strongly support that that is the case. One of my, I did more comments forthcoming, but to your question, I actually think two-year terms for council liaisons, because it actually takes a while to join a committee and understand their rhythm and get the continuity of what they're working on. And, and I think maybe applying something, if it could be two, two-year terms, that could, A, be like an entire elected official's term. But if you're, you know, serving eight years, it would give council people an opportunity to be on other committees. It would allow different council people to, you know, get capacity by, you know, joining. I know I have peers who are as interested, if not more so than me, on sustainability. So I think some limits would be good, but I think two-one-year term could be the kind of turnover that's just not really in service to anyone participating in that system. So I would suggest two-year terms and limit it to two years. And then that councilperson should be communicating with the, the mayor what their interests are. And the mayor can select, select, well, so those are my responses to that. Thank you, Ms. Hoppy. And I would still like my term when I.
I've got you down there. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So I, I really would like to circle back on the majority of the positions being selected by staff versus council, because I think that, I, I understand that there's a matter of expertise that should be on the committee, but I think that it's within our discretion and, like, we have the capability of deciding whether they are experts or have a significant amount of interest in various fields and, and make those decisions on council. And I, I'm still heavily, heavily favor council selecting more seats than, than staff on the hybrid. And I, I also support the, the police advisory committee being, being a hybrid model as well. I think that that's a great way to ensure the community-based policing and have a little bit more of a policy kind of advocacy role. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we should remember that being on a committee is a volunteer position. No, people aren't getting paid to do this. So the idea about the expertise, okay, it's always been, what is your interest to be on a committee? When you look at Parks and Rec, or you look at the other committees and things, okay, what are you, a forest ranger? I mean, you know, it's part of being interested in your community as a person who lives here. And so we're bringing in people from other places that may have expertise, okay? They've got masters, whatever, and things like that. But they don't live here. And I think we need to remember, these are volunteer positions. And I've been on a committee before, and the IDEA committee here, the questions regarding the demographics, to me, I don't even think they're legal. I mean, come on, you know, you know, what's your education, your household income and all this kind of stuff? I get it. How about, are you a resident here? Or, you know, do you rent? I don't know how, I get that part. But these other kinds of things, your race and all this other kind of thing. When there's an opening on a committee, people know it. And they should know it. It's put out there. So it's up to people to apply. And it's like, we're, we're only going to take this person or this person or this. And no other applications for positions on committees have these demographic questions on them. And I just think, you know, okay, you want two people like this, two people like that, three like this, or whatever. To me, that's just, that just doesn't seem right, you know? So if people are interested in this committee, then they step up and they apply. But the personal information, and I do believe, I'm very interested in districts being represented, not just people from outside. And, but I, I, I really wonder about asking all these demographic questions, like, what is your education? What's that got to do with being on the committee? You know, how old are you? Can we ask those questions? I mean, really? I didn't think we could. So I just think that's out there. There's not any of those questions on the Sustainability Committee at all. Doesn't ask, does it ask, what's your education? You know, and things like that. So I think we need to remember that committees are volunteers. And they're people who mostly live here that have, do have an interest in what the committee is about. And I don't think you have to be a brainiac to be on a committee. You learn as you go. And, and you're interested, and that's how things get done as a community. You know, that's just my own feeling.
Thank you. Let's see, I've got Counselor Holtein next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of just points to sort of what's emerging as a dialogue here is, you know, for, for the at-larges or the, the staff appointed for these hybrid, not uncodified committees. So first of all, like, Sustainable Wheat Ridge specifically requested it. And I think one of the things we do here is listen to what our citizens ask of us. And so I'm just speaking on their behalf, and they very specifically said it was important to them to be able to have a pool of, to Counselor Weaver's point, not just expertise, but experiences and interests. And, and I, and I don't think it's that huge of a, of a deal. I mean, we have zero council district representation now. And having sat in those meetings and listening to the dialogues and the kind of things they're talking about, I mean, they literally are bringing, like, technical advice for Mary Hester, our Sustainability Coordinator. So to, you know, we can probably individually, when we pick in our districts, we're picking one person. We're not looking at a pool of people and saying, this is a well-rounded representation. So I think in Sustainable Wheat Ridge, I'm going to just really, like, adamantly stick to, stick to advocating for that for them, because they've asked for it, but also because I've seen the benefit of it. You know, the other thing I think about is that when we have vacancies, district-specific vacancies are hard to fill. And if we have vacancies, we have more vacancies that are in a pool of staff appointees, it actually is a lot easier for us to fill quality people in that position. So I'd like to stick to the recommendations coming forward from staff on that. As for the applications, I agree. I'm, I'm not super comfortable getting the demographic information. I understand the intent of that with our IDEA committee, but looking at the, the questions that are asked, we're asking on, on the questionnaire they proposed, we have, like, really nice, open-ended questions that allow people to opt in to share. What is their personal experience that they feel they would be bringing to that committee? And they have the opportunity there to self-identify through a variety of different, you know, what we would be asking as demographic things. And the demographics are presented as optional anyway, so people not opting into it wouldn't even give us, like, a good data set to, to be choosing from. So I'd actually suggest, we actually don't even ask it, because it's, it's a barrier for applications. Like, honestly, if I were asked to provide my income, I just wouldn't do it. And so I, I think we're better off really encouraging good, good short answer, where we really are welcoming to people to share their experience, and we really value what they have to say to us about that. So, so I, I would prefer that we don't do that. And, and in fact, we actually work to diversify our applicants across all of our boards and commissions and committees. I mean, it's particularly important and idea, but I think we'll learn through that experience how we can do better. And perhaps we could, once people are appointed, ask them if they want to do an anonymous survey, so that we can kind of understand across boards and commissions what kind of diversification we're getting, so that we can start getting some metadata that's indicating how in alignment is our boards, commissions, committee participation in alignment with the demographics of our city. So those are my thoughts on that. And then, in general, I'd prefer we have as consistent of an application and application process across everything. And if a specific committee, especially if one of their qualifications is technical, interest, experience, expertise, maybe they can have an extra question or two. But I think the, the more consistent the applications are, just the easier it is for everybody. So I think those are the things that are important to me. Let me just double-check here. Yeah. And, and to Ms. Hutchinson's point, these are, these are volunteers, and, and their time is really valued in our community, in communities. So as flexible as we can be to, to welcome them is, is important to me.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to move forward a couple of consensuses.
Before, before you went to a consensus, if you're going there, I just wanted to make a, and I don't have anybody else signed up. The, the two things that I had been considering about, number one was the, the role of the mayor-appointed sort of tenth-committee person and not being a, a member of the committee. And I guess I, I had sort of looked at that and I said, well, I didn't see the view that Counselor Holtein brought forward that that was a positive integer. I thought it would provide separation from you and your fellow committee members. And so I didn't see a, a real reason for that. What, I mean, when you looked at it, what was the reason not to have the, the liaison a member of the committee?
That's a great, excuse me, that's a great question. So it's typically the case that when you have a liaison from the city council on one of these committees, whether it's a board or commission, because some cities have liaisons for all their boards and commissions, or for uncodified special committees, it's typically the case that that liaison is a non-voting member, with the idea being that that liaison doesn't have as significant as responsibilities as those board or committee or commission members. You know, on some of these boards and commissions, the council liaisons, they don't attend all the meetings. Sometimes they only come for special conversations or to get updates from the committees. So I guess the argument that they would be non-voting would pertain to them not having as significant as a responsibility as some of the members on these uncodified special committees, particularly when we're talking about putting so much expertise on these committees and having them organize events and activities and things like that.
Would, if you had a liaison, would that sort of abrogate the need to have the committee come on a, maybe an annual basis and report to the council as a whole?
Yeah. So one of the things we heard from the boards and commissions conversation that we had back in August was that council wanted an annual report on all of our boards and commissions. And certainly, if Sustainable Wheat Ridge and IDEA committee are accountable to the city council, we would include them in that as well. Having those liaisons certainly does lessen the need for it for those specific boards. I think, you know, a great example of that has been Counselor Holtein being able to give her experience tonight in a conversation she's had of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge and how that informs her thoughts on the issue. So yes, it can definitely improve communication and lessen the need for other forms of communication.
And do you think that would be more, more effective or, or informational than having, you know, and I'm just sort of brainstorming here, you know, I guess if, if the staff lia, staff has a liaison with every committee, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So we've got, we've got a conduit from the committee into the city structure. I mean, another way to look at it would be to have the staff and the committee, you know, develop a narrative, you know, a narrative of their annual events and then, and then have that information. So I'm just thinking about other, other ways to do that, but I appreciate your, you know, the difference there. The other thing that, that struck me is that I really sort of have a, a dear heart for is that all of the, all of the recommendation, all of the, the appointments that we make as, to serve on these committees, I think should be nominated by whoever is doing the nominations, whether it's staff or whether it's other, you know, council members or the mayor appointing these, but that they're ratified by council as a council action. So that at the end of the day, even if, even if they're staff committees, the staff recommends these, these people be appointed to the committee, that comes to a meeting and we, you know, we do that as we, as effectively as we do that. So that would sort of be my only other, other thought on that. So, and I had, before I go to you, Ms. Hoppy, I'll go to Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So I just kind of wanted to bring it home that I'm okay with the hybrid model as far as having only four seats reserved for the district representation. I would just like to see that a majority of the members be selected by city council. So whether that's four district-represented members and then four at-large members selected by city council as opposed to staff with both the hybrid committees or all of the hybrid committees, if we go that route for the police department, that would just be my preference, particularly because they're a policy advisory committee. So they're going to be advising us as, as a council body on, on legislation. And so I think that a majority of that should be selected by city council. Thank you.
Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess just to wrap up that point that Counselor Dozeman was talking about, when city council ratifies, that is when we are selecting. So like, you don't have to vote to ratify if, like, if you look at what's being done. It's basically like we are appointing, we're appointing their suggestions by ratifying it. Okay, so I'm going to try to find some consensuses.
Okay, yes, Ms. Weaver.
So, so just, let's just play that example out. A list of people comes up for our ratification. I see a name on a list that I vehemently disagree with. I can say it at that time.
Typically, what you would do is say, is there anyone, and I can't remember the name of it, but to take this off of the, off of the vote right now and consider it as a separate item. So it's separate, a separate vote. So you're voting on a slate, or, you know.
So we have that option.
So you, you would have the option to remove someone from the slate and consider it later, uh, before you vote on a, on a, on a full slate of candidates.
Perfect. Thank you.
I was just gonna make the point that right now, all of our at-large appointees, I believe, are appointed by the mayor, right? Because the council only represents each district. So there's really no way for us to work together to appoint at-large people individually, like as a group. We can't do that. Somebody's gotta make a recommendation and then we have to ratify it. So I, I, the staff is the best way to do that. So.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for consensus to use the staff recommended framework regulating uncodified special committees with the following amendment that the, that the hy, that the hybrid committees will be council ratified.
Question? Go ahead. Okay, so I see, I see four hands.
On what ratification means. So does ratification mean that the city council could, for example, remove a council, a staff-selected member? Okay. Yeah. All right. Just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, would, would really be that I guess we're gonna have, you know, at some point, these are, the, the boards and commissions and all of these, all of these boards and committees are gonna come together for a, you know, for a nomination and a vote by council. So it would be an opportunity to, you, staff would provide a slate of candidates. We, we nominate these candidates for your consideration. And, and if everybody's fine with the slate, then it's fine. If somebody sees someone that they would like to, to remove from the slate and then vote on the rest of it and then, and then consider that separately. That's kind of the way it typically works, but.
So you would treat it like a consensus item where if, you know, if there's a member on the slate and, and council objects to it, we would remove that member without a majority vote?
And then we would vote on the other?
And vote on the other.
Vote on the remaining slate and the, and a majority vote by the members present from voting. That, that's sort of a.
Okay.
Counselor Ong?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have one question. Would it be possible to do that beforehand? You know, i- in other words, you know, if there's somebody that we didn't want on there to, for our staff, before it even goes up?
Yeah, you know, Counselor Weaver?
Don't we already do that? I mean, this is something we are.
You know, that, you really, you really don't wanna, you, you don't wanna get into the starting gate if your horse isn't ready to, ready to race. So I, you know, I think we probably try to do that on an informal basis as you're, as you're completing your, your list of, of nominations. You sort of, you know, kick the tires around the, around the thing, make sure that everybody's pretty well on board. From a public relations standpoint, that's certainly the best way to do it.
So we, so staff could provide the list of staff recommended appointees to council informally so that the slate that goes before council's formal ratification has been vetted? Does that?
I think that's a fair assumption.
Okay. We can do that.
Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you.
Did you have any?
Can we just say the full slate? Because then, then we know what council.
Well, we will, because we will be making our selections first. So once you're looking through your selections, if there's something that is raising a hair on your, on the back of your neck, then that would be your opportunity to reach out to staff and say, hey, as, as we go further in this process. So not, we don't even necessarily need the unofficial, like we will already know who's all applied. Okay. I'd like to ask for consensus for item two, which is to apply the uncodified special committee regulations to the committees with the following amendments, as recommended by staff with the following amendments. To change the Wheat Ridge Police Department Community Advisory Group to a hybrid group. To change the two one-year terms to two two-year terms for the council liaisons for the Sustainable Wheat Ridge and the Idea Committee. And to add our forfeiture committee, once you figure out the real name of it. I know it's real. I just don't know the real name of it. To add that as a staff-selected committee.
Before you take a vote on that, on the, on the community advisor group for the Wheat Ridge Police Department, so if you give consensus to make that hybrid group, I need to have that conversation with the police department and make sure that we can implement that. But if, certainly if we can, we'll go ahead and do that. And if we have any troubles, we'll come back to city council and, and have a discussion. I just wanna make sure and, and set the expectation, because I'm not 100% sure we can actualize that. But i- if council's all right with that, then I would say, go ahead and, and move forward with the motion.
Counselor Weaver, did you have a?
Yeah, and the wording of expertise or interest and/or interest or experience. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to write that on consensus.
Okay. So do we have consensus on that? Looks like we do. Certainly don't have unanimity, though.
And then, um, item three, page three, page four, item two. Oh, sorry, here I am. Consensus to keep the contact information to appoint the Idea Committee members. I would just say for all, would like to keep the contact information.
Page one?
Yeah. I'm on item three.
Page five?
That's not, it's the contact information for the idea. It's, it's so we can contact the people and say, oh, I see that you've applied for this. Would you like to give me a little background? It's not demographics. Just contact.
So this is number three of item three on page five.
Yeah. Keep the contact information. So consensus for that?
Okay.
Thank you. Item four, page six. I'd like to ask that we do not collect demographic information in the Idea Committee application. Also understanding that if, if it's some, if it comes back where we're like, we're having a really hard time struggling, then you guys can always come back to us and say, this isn't working. So consensus not to?
Okay.
Item five, which is about the application for the Idea Committee. I personally like that it has the different questions on it, kind of like Sustainable Wheat Ridge does. But now that we've changed it where we don't collect any demographic information, I think it's important to keep some of those other questions on there about like, you know, have, have, have you completed any diversity or anti-bias awareness cultural trainings? I think that part, I think it's important. Sometimes when people are, are maybe doing kind of short narrative answers, they like, they'll kind of forget those types of things too. So, so I would like to ask for consensus that we keep the, the Idea Committee application questions as presented by staff with the amendment of removing the demographic information on application.
Okay, we have consensus on that.
Did I get them all? I think I did.
Okay. Counselor Holtein?
Closing comment. It's just, as we go through this, it just reminds me of the importance of just outreach and communication. And we haven't, I don't know if we talked about this, but one of the things with these hybrid committee selections where there's gonna be council selecting and then staff selecting, is that we're gonna need to make sure that we've got extra time built in for that. So let's make sure that we, I'd, I'd be interested in just hearing more at some point about like, what is our process? Like when either our, our bulk recruiting for the March appointments or when openings come, what is sort of the standard? If an opening happens, it's like a six-week window, there's four weeks of recruitment, two weeks for selection, like just kind of standardizing that because it, it feels like, I don't know how much longer after the vacancy, the positions posted, I don't know if it's consistent, how long it's open. So some of these consistencies will really help us be better recruiters, because all of the conversations we had tonight are contingent on us, like reaching our community, encouraging them to do these applications we've talked a lot about. So I just wanted to share those comments.
And maybe we can do some, you know, some creative advertising around this, you know, sort of, we, we've had study sessions about this, how to make it more interesting and attractive and, and rewarding for citizens to step up and serve on boards and commissions and committees. And, and, you know, there's a new application and it's a new day and it's a new chap, it's the next chapter. All right? Any more, does that answer? Do you, do you have all the questions or the direction that you're looking for?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the council members for taking on this subject tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you for, for being here, for bringing this to us. I, it's a, it's a hard topic to, to sort of get your hands around and to, to really make sure that you're doing the right thing, but I think you've done a great job. So thanks so much. Appreciate it. It's about 8:10. I would suggest that we take a few minutes, come back here in about 10 minutes and we'll move to our next item. So we will adjourn. Well, we will re, stand in recess, I guess, we're in recess. My candy first. Our next item, item three, is the Let's Talk Resident Engagement Program update by I-70 North and Lutheran Crown Hill. Great stuff going on.
Yes. We have Ashley Holland, our neighborhood engagement specialist, to present to you all.
Okay. Ashley, take it away.
All right. Thank you so much for having me tonight. So, we are going to talk about the engagement blitzes in neighborhoods nine and 10, and also a little bit about a program and work plan update as well. So as a reminder, Let's Talk splits Wheat Ridge into 10 neighborhoods. You can see the map here. And we have now finished our engagement blitzes in all 10 neighborhoods. And most recently, we completed engagement in North I-70 and Lutheran Crown Hill, which is the bulk of what we'll talk about tonight. So, a quick reminder of kind of how we set up our engagement. I know you all have heard this a couple times, but in case anyone new is listening or needs a little refresher, we split our engagement into two rounds. So in our first round of engagement, we ask really broad questions. We try to come in without any preconceived notions about what a given neighborhood might be interested in. And then we review all of the information that we get from our residents. We look for common trends and themes, and then talk to our colleagues in different departments and divisions about what the city could do to address the feedback, and develop a list of action items that we can come back to the community with. So in round two, we take those responsive actions back to the residents and have them weigh in on those, and then we do what we do right now, and come to City Council and let you know what they said. So we have in your, in the blitz reports, you can see an appendix with all the different ways that we reach people, but something that I always love to hammer home is that we really try and reach people in the way that best suits them. We know that we are talking to individuals with individual schedules and preferences and abilities, so we do in-person and virtual, high-tech and low-tech, and really try and reach people where they're at. And I also wanted to point out that new, in these blitzes, we used a new tactic for communication, which was door hangers. So when we talked to you all in, I believe, February, when we were ramping up, getting ready for this blitz, we heard you loud and clear that, especially the folks in North I-70, where we have a lot of new residents moving into the new townhomes up there, that they might need an extra touch point. And so we worked with a company that they delivered door hangers right to any exterior door in the area, and we had a great return on that. So we're also using that tactic for other engagement coming up as well. So this has the percentage of each population, each neighborhood's population, that engaged with the program, and we have heard from about 1,800 residents across the city. So tonight, we'll highlight some of the feedback that we received, but you can find all the details in those blitz reports. The first 17-ish pages of those blitz reports have a summary of what we've heard, and then the giant appendix of every comment that we received in our survey, any written comment that we received in our open houses. So you can get, you can read all of that detail in the blitz reports, which are available on What's Up Wheat Ridge. We're also happy to print them off for folks, so if anyone listening wants a copy, a physical copy, can always let us know, and we'll get you one. So in the report, you can see the main things, the themes that came up. We'll start in Lutheran Crown Hill. So in Lutheran Crown Hill, we heard that the top things that they were thinking about were bike and pedestrian access and safety, private development and its impacts on neighborhood character, and traffic and speeding. I also want to note that unsurprisingly, we had a lot of comments about the Lutheran Legacy Campus in this neighborhood. You know, it's a huge chunk of land, right, almost smack dab in the middle of this neighborhood. And so we were able to use the blitz to connect those residents with resources to learn more about the Lutheran Legacy Campus. So whether that was the Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan that you all adopted a couple years ago, or Intermountain Health itself. So the top-ranked action items in the neighborhood, the first one was improving bike and pedestrian connections to Crown Hill across 32nd Avenue, so creating some safer crosswalks to get to the sidewalk that runs along the south side of 32nd. The next was enhancing the Rocky Mountain Ditch corridor for open space and bike-ped connections. And then the last, increasing resources for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. That one connects back to both the bike and pedestrian infrastructure as well as traffic and speeding in the neighborhood. And then in North I-70, the main themes that we heard were bike and pedestrian access and safety, again, it's very popular in all neighborhoods. Also, the desire for more neighborhood-serving commercials. So we heard from both longtime residents and a lot of the new folks that live up there that they want the neighborhood coffee shop, they want a brewery, they want, you know, a convenience store where they can pick things up in their neighborhood. And then lastly, the desire for more parks and open space up there as well, and better connections to existing parks and open space. And so the top-ranked items, the first one being a bike and pedestrian connection from the neighborhood down to the Clear Creek Trail. So, you know, people can use Tabor, and Tabor has a bridge over I-70 to get down to Clear Creek, but it's quite narrow, and there's, you know, there's sidewalks and bike lanes along many parts of Tabor to get down to that amazing community amenity. Next was a bike-ped-only connection on 52nd Avenue, so this is a really specific one, but 52nd ends, and it also ends at a fence, so you can't walk or bike along there either. So people on the west side of that neighborhood want to get up to the Van Biber Trail in Arvada, people on the east side want to get over to the nice new infrastructure along 52nd and potentially cross Ward to get over to Drake Middle School, so those are some reasons for that. And then the third-ranked item was, again, resources for the NTMP. So if you remember, after each blitz, we update a work plan that has all of the action items. So now it has all of the action items that we've presented to all 10 neighborhoods. You all received this in advance, but anyone can find it on What's Up Wheat Ridge. This has a little visual of what that looks like, but essentially, it has the action item and any neighborhood who weighed in on it. So if only one neighborhood weighed in, you can kind of tell that really quickly. If all 10 did, you can look at that and see where it ranked as an action item and the level of support from that neighborhood, and its status of where we are with it now. And I want to highlight a few things on the work plan, but again, it's pretty extensive, so if you're curious about a particular topic, you can look there. But, so, some things that are currently happening. We have engagement going on for 38th Avenue, the West End Improvement, so that's that area between Kipling and Youngfield. We've got a lot of engagement coming up here in the, actually, the next few weeks. And we were also awarded a grant for the street improvements to West 35th Avenue. In, you know, we have a Parks and Rec Department, they're looking at adding a fence between Paramount Park and Kipling, so that was a really popular one in the Paramount Park neighborhood. And then they're also looking to enhance some parks in southeast Wheat Ridge. And then we have some completed work plan items. So we worked with you all in the spring to revamp the NTMP, and the new annual timeline kicks off in January. You all adopted an ADU ordinance and bulk plane regulations, and then there's been lots of physical improvements to parks and trails, like playground replacements, trail updates, and the new disc golf course at Fruitdale Park. So again, this is not an exhaustive list of everything we've completed, just a few highlights, so you can see all the details in the work plan. So what is next for Let's Talk? So now that we've completed all 10 neighborhoods, we are going to continue, of course, with the implementation of action items. One of the things we're really proud of in this program is, we don't like to leave anyone hanging, so if we have completed something, or we have more upcoming engagement on a topic that a neighborhood addressed, we go back to that neighborhood via What's Up Wheat Ridge and invite them to continue in that process, or give them the heads up, hey, you know, we did that playground replacement that we asked you about. So we will continue to do that, of course. And then moving forward, we're going to build off of the Let's Talk brand to help corral a few different engagement efforts that are planned over the next few years, to make it really clear to people what they can engage on, what different topics they can engage on, and how to do so. So that's things like the Comprehensive Plan Update, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, Economic Development Strategy, and others. So residents will be able to go to the What's Up Wheat Ridge page for Let's Talk and see all the different ways and different topics that they can engage on. And that is your update.
Oh, wow. Great. Thank you. That was really, uh, it was a great job. All right. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you for that presentation. The material is excellent. I love the appendix, you know, looking at all that information, all that data. So I got a, I just have a couple of questions and comments, and you kind of touched on some of them. Number one, is there a place where these neighborhood, you know, What's Up Wheat Ridge packets are stored? Like, if I wanted to look at, like, the Bel Air neighborhood, where could I go as a resident and get to that easily? That would show, like, all this information, the appendix and...
Yeah, absolutely. So the What's Up Wheat Ridge, the Let's Talk page, we have, each neighborhood has its own page, and then we have a general Let's Talk page. The general Let's Talk page has every single blitz report on it. So you can, it's an easy place to go and click, and you can download it and print it. And as I mentioned before, we're also, we have let's-talk@ci.wetridge.co.us, and that's our email address. We have a phone number as well. So residents who maybe aren't comfortable on using technology, or would rather not do so, they can also email or call us, and we're happy to get them a copy. We do paper copies of the survey throughout for folks that can't come to the public meeting but also aren't interested in taking things online. So there's a hub for all of that information, and we're also happy to work with individuals to get what they need.
Thank you. And then, is the, is the longer term to, since you've made all these contacts, to kind of engage neighborhoods every so often? And if so, what might that period be? I'd just be guessing, is it like every year, or, you know, just to kind of keep residents re-engaged with the process?
To keep them informed. So we typically, after each blitz, if there are any, this is when, you know, we reconnect with people across the city, you know, Parks and Rec, or Police Department, or whomever, to get updates on the status of different things. So typically, that's the time that we go back to the neighborhoods and give them a little heads up, here's what's going on with the action items we presented with you, if there are any big changes. But the great thing about What's Up Wheat Ridge is we have a huge database of engaged residents who are interested in either their neighborhood, or specific topics, or both. And so, you know, we'll be able to leverage that for things like the Comprehensive Plan Update, or any of these other engagement efforts, to, we email them typically at the beginning of any new engagement. We email anyone who has signed up on What's Up Wheat Ridge to give them a heads up of, here's a new project you might be interested in. Go over to that page and sign up for notifications and continue to be involved that way, and it's been very successful.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stites, Mayor Protem Stites, pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Ashley, thank you. And I know you and Jeff did a fantastic job over the last, was it, three years, four years, since you guys started this? You know, Counselor Hulteen and I, back when we were working with the NRS, as we were giving those recommendations, it was a little bit nebulous, but it was, you know, pretty specific that this neighborhood tour, and I know it got a lot of flak from, like, at the time, current and former elected people, because that sounded like the job of an elected person, go out and figure out what the... But the problem with, and I've knocked on a lot of doors over the last six years, the problem with that is, is just because I hear a story doesn't mean it can translate into policy. And what you guys have done a fantastic job is, is not just hearing and collecting all this data, but making it into policies and making it into recommendations that have already been adopted. And as we look at 2J, I think 2J specifically is, comes from a lot of this neighborhood engagement. So a lot of the work that you've done over the last couple of years has really helped inform a lot of decisions that we've made as a council, so I really appreciate all the hard work that you've put in. And I know, it sounds like the Let's Talk program is receiving an award this week, right?
We have, yeah. What is it? It's, today is Monday. On Wednesday, we will receive a Dr. Cog Metrovision Award for this program.
That's, it's phenomenal, and it's really helped a lot of citizens. And Counselor Hulteen and I were out knocking on doors yesterday and around this area, and all the comments that are listed in here, those are comments that we heard pretty commonly yesterday, quite a bit. But it's, you know, it also helps us be able to have a conversation about solutions and not just problems. And I think that, for a long time, Wheat Ridge was bogged down in problems, and that people were looking at problem, 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 and not solutions. And I really appreciate this program because this creates solutions for a lot of problems that some people didn't even know they had. So it's pretty phenomenal, and I think you guys presented a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thanks. I just want to celebrate. This is pretty amazing. As Counselor Stites was saying, when we were doing the neighborhood revitalization strategy and came forward with the recommendations of taking it to the neighbors, like, we just didn't know what that looked like. And just so many good things have come out of this, and it's just really, like, proven that when we go into the neighborhoods and ask them what they want in this kind of structured way, we don't want to be too open-ended because then we don't know what to do with it. And so I just want to recognize the way the approach has been done has, like, really allowed us to ask, you know, questions of our community members that we're actually able to take action on. And in, you know, my work both here and my day job, you know, people get really fatigued about being asked about what's important to them if they don't see it translated into action. And I think this program's just been really successful in both helping inform, you know, what our priorities should be here at City Hall, but also really helping people in our community feel heard and valued. And so it's just translated to a lot of benefits, and I just want to celebrate that we've asked a lot of, a lot of corners of our city what's important to them, and we're better for it. So just thank you for your part in that, and it's, you're very deserving of the award. And I will be there on Wednesday to recognize, see Wheat Ridge get recognized for it. So good work, Wheat Ridge, good work, Ashley. I am looking forward to seeing what's next. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions for Ashley? She came all the way down here. She spent two and a half hours listening to the... Come on. I think everybody's ready to go home. I'm sorry. I think it's a great report. You guys, it's really, it's really astounding that we've been able to reach out to our community in such a significant way, in such, so many different, different ways to try to engage people. And I think, you know, as Mayor Protem Stites said, we haven't always done this, and I think, I think we're much better off now, and really feeling it in the community, and feeling it in the neighborhoods, the sort of the level of engagement that, you know, change is possible and people hear you, you know. So thank you very much. We appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
And look forward to seeing you Wednesday at the Dr. Cog Gala. Anything further on the, on this item, on agenda item number three? Well, thank you very much, Ashley. Appreciate you being here. And that concludes our agenda items. We will go to, go to any staff, staff reports?
No additional items tonight.
Oh, nothing additional tonight. Elected officials' reports. I'll turn around so I don't forget our clerk. He'll raise his hand if he needs anything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing new tonight.
No hand up tonight. We'll go to Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of different things. First of all, this is National Week Without Driving, which is organized by America Walks, and they ask elected officials and community leaders across the country to pledge to not drive or minimize their driving. And the reason they focus on elected officials is to help draw attention to the fact that we all represent people who don't have access to a car. And when we spend a week traveling as they would travel, it really helps us understand what the needs are for our residents who don't drive due to age, ability, or choice. So I am unsurprisingly, am participating in that, and I will be riding my bike to Dr. Cog Awards on Wednesday. But, second thing, this Saturday is Sustainable Wheat Ridge is hosting a paint recycling event in Anderson Park. It is from 9:00 to 1:00. We need some volunteers, so if anyone wants to volunteer for that, and I'll tell you what, it's rewarding. I volunteered last year, and people were, like, weeping with gratitude with somewhere to get rid of their paint. So it's actually a lot of fun. So if you're interested in volunteering, reach out to Mary Hester or myself, and I'd be happy to connect you with the volunteer form. It was actually a really rewarding volunteer experience. And then Happiness Gardens report. It is definitely fall. The sunflowers look like crap, but they're supposed to at this time of year because they are producing seeds that are part of our wider ecosystem. And people are harvesting all their tomatoes. I got one of the last zucchinis out of the food forest yesterday, and Happiness Gardens is getting ready to go to bed. So that's my Happiness Gardens report. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Additional elected officials, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thanks, Mayor. And talking about Sustainable Committee, they did have the electronic waste drop-off on Saturday, and I did appreciate it. I got rid of a 1970's TV. Thank you.
All right. Counselor, Mayor Protem Stites.
I also appreciate it. I got rid of a TV I've been lugging around for, like, 20 years. But I wanted to thank, thanks Sustainable Wheat Ridge. I got to cut the ribbon on two pretty awesome businesses, Shannon and Will... two pretty awesome businesses, Shannon and Wilson and Mass FX Media, both on 38th. That's about 50 new employees that are going to be working on 38th and hopefully shopping and eating lunch there and dinner and all that cool stuff. So, pretty phenomenal businesses there. Counselor Weaver and I are going to be hosting our next District III meeting. It's just going to be sort of an unofficial District III meeting slash 2J hype-up session. It's going to be pretty awesome. It's going to be Saturday, what is it, October 14th at Louise Turner Park. We're going to have 2J signs, literature. We'll be talking anything going on in Wheat Ridge and 2J. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Additional elected officials' reports. Anything more to come before the body? We will be back here in a regular, regular meeting one week from tonight. I will not be with you that night, but Mayor Potem Stites will be chairing that meeting. So, I'll be watching online. So, better watch out. If there's no more business to come before us, thank you all for being here. We will stand adjourned.